Say the numbers rather than... So we'll call the meeting in order for the workshop for July 5th. Jenny, if you take the role.
Councilmember Thorson?
Here.
Councilmember Peterson?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Mayor Furlong?
Here. Coram is present. Motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved out of...
Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. So we have, looks like, one topic, and I'll turn it over to interim city manager, Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. So, the topic tonight is the 2023 Levy and Budget Goal Setting Workshop. This is a kickoff of the 2023 budget process. In this workshop, the City Council will have the opportunity to discuss and set the 2023 levy target, and to identify your goals and objectives for the 2023 budget. Items for consideration tonight will include 2022 budget and city-based property tax levy, driving factors for 2023, preliminary valuation changes, 2023 potential property tax impact, HRA and EDA property tax levy, and the budget calendar. And as always, Director Winnick has been very busy in putting together a good packet for you all, and he's... I'll let him take it over from here.
Doesn't it seem like we just ended the budget and starts all over again?
It absolutely does, yeah. It's just like, "Yeah, I didn't even get to catch my breath from the last one." But I just want to know that, you know, there was a little bit of deception that was made today. When I had put this item out on the workshop, there was another item. So I thought, "Oh, you know, the other item would probably be about a half an hour or so." And I figured, eh, I could fill about 45 minutes to an hour, you know, hopefully, you know, at that point in time. And then, when it got published, it was gone, and I'm the only item. So, you know what ends up happening with that?
You get us for an hour and a half.
I get you for an hour and a half. And so, I was looking at this, and this is actually a workshop. So we're going to do some work tonight, too.
Perfect.
And we need your help, actually.
Okay.
And so, after I go through the material that's been presented, then we've got some questions and some post-it notes to get your feedback on a number of questions. And then, we will be looking at bringing a preliminary levy budget, which includes the general fund, the EDA, and the HRA, hopefully, as soon as two weeks from tonight, so we can start to have that more of an authentic dialogue on exactly where we're at. And I think it went well last year. We'll prepare some options. Some options may be increasing, some may be decreasing, and, you know, kind of talk about the impacts that those would have. And again, it's up to you, you know, to make the decision and ask any questions. But I kind of wanted to walk through some of the material today, and I kind of want to... There's some areas that I want to remind that the City Council did a fantastic job last year. And there's a kind of an overall theme I want to present to everybody, is that we positioned ourselves, through what we did last year, to be able to do the 2022 street road projects. In addition to that, we prepared ourselves to levy money this year, and not having that huge of an impact on our taxpayers. And I think that's crucial to know. And where that comes in is fiscal disparities. And when we get that into the presentation, I'll kind of describe that a little bit more. But if you can, if you recall, when we were looking at refinancing some of our debt last year, it was actually market value debt. We refinanced it with net tax capacity debt. So what that does is, in essence, is it raises up our local rate. Doesn't have an overall impact for the taxpayer, but that local rate then gets utilized... The prior local rate gets utilized for the next year's value of fiscal disparity dollars that we receive back. And North St. Paul is considered, from the fiscal disparities perspective, a winner. I think we're ranked, like, about number six of all the cities, St. Paul being the highest winner in the fiscal disparities. And so, if we don't levy, and our rates go down the subsequent year, even if we were to have a 0% levy in that subsequent year, the taxpayers will pay. Will be hit with an increase because we will lose fiscal disparity dollars. So I kind of want to set that out there, kind of as a separate message, and we'll cover it as we go through the materials. But to begin the 2023, I think we need to start with where we left off last year. And, if I can move this other screen down here. The purpose of this workshop tonight is to provide an opportunity for the City Council to discuss and set the 2023 levy target. That'll be a question that I'll be asking later on, so let's not jump and everybody go, "0%!" We will go through the materials, and later on, we'll discuss that. It's also an opportunity for City Council to identify their goals and objectives for the 2023. Part of hearing from you and finding out what those goals are and objectives will help us align better the development of our budget, to make sure that we're achieving those goals and achieving those objectives. Some work that I think the city needs to do in the future is really to define a citywide mission, vision, and to have your goals established and reviewed on an annual basis, so we can align our budget to those goals and making sure that we're planning for the future the best that we can for the residents of the City of North St. Paul. Items for consideration tonight, we're going to start with the starting point of the 2022 budget. We're going to look at some of the driving factors that we are already aware of that are going to impact our 2023 budget. We're going to look at preliminary valuation changes, and that is just amazing news. And I think we were all, we're kind of anticipating it just because of the residential home sales in the market. But they've gone up very, very high for the residents. And then, we're going to talk about looking at that. I've made some estimates of what that 2023 potential property tax impact would be. Then, we're going to take a look at the HRA and EDA property tax levy, and then, just kind of a high overview of the budget calendar. After I get through all of that stuffy kind of stuff, then we're going to have some fun. We're going to do a few exercises. And again, it's really to help Brian and myself understand where the City Council's coming from, so we can bring a budget back to you that meets your goals and meets your objectives. It is also a part of our process this year that we're going to do, is that we are going to bring all the department's heads in here to talk about their budgets, and to make sure that there is that ownership component to it for what they're asking for and what the impacts, if a financial decision isn't made, whether it's a staffing level, whether it's, you know, a line item in their budget, and we're looking at not funding it fully. So the starting point, the 2022 budget. Some highlights from that 2022 budget. Our revenue's composition, property taxes compose the budget and the general fund, 56%. So we're heavily reliant on the property tax. Intergovernmental makes up 20%. A lot of that's the local government aid. And then, other financing sources or transfers, and that's really what we're getting from, basically, our enterprise funds. Our expenditures, composition by category, our personnel and benefits make up 64%. Our professional services, 14. Internal services, 12%. Composition of our expenditures by department. Our public safety, including police, is at 43%, fire and code enforcement at 14%. So you can see 57% of our budget is for public safety. Street maintenance makes up 14%. And if you remember, our 2022 levy increase was 5.99%. And our past 13 years, the average has been 5.32%. So really, last year, when we went up to 5.99% coming off of a zero levy, we really weren't all that far outside of what has been the norm in the past 13 years. Some years have been lower, some have been higher. In the general fund, just kind of looking at, you can see where the ad valorem taxes, property taxes, is 55.78%, the 56%. You can see other financing sources, intergovernmental. Special assessments is 0%. We no longer do special assessments. That's something probably in the future that we probably will end up having to have more of a discussion about, on whether we want to reverse that decision and charge special assessments on street projects. Right now, the city does not. Expenditures by category, again, you see personnel costs are almost 50% of our cost. And you can see, you know, well, actually, personnel costs are higher than that because if you take personnel and benefits, you know, you're arriving at 63% of our budget is just the personnel to keep running on a day-to-day basis. Expenditure by departments, again, you see the police, the fire, code enforcement, street maintenance. The rest of them are pretty low. You know, you've got administration at 6.24%, finance at 4.78%. So there's really not a big driver outside of public safety and the street maintenance, you know, really coming down to the basic services that a city provides. Again, here's kind of a history of the levy, looking at it both from a debt levy and a general fund component to it, and a total levy perspective. If you look what we did last year, again, just by the great decisions that the City Council made last year, we actually lowered our debt levy portion of our levy, allowing us to increase a little bit more on the general levy component to it, which allowed us to add some new positions. If you remember, we added back a director of public works, a very valuable position to have in the city. We added a sergeant's position to the police force, in addition to a part-time CSO. And then, we moved a part-time employee in community development to a full-time position. So we did, you know, did a very good job of adding some FTE positions. I think, you know, the unfortunate piece of our city manager, who was just here for a relatively short period of time, there's some walkaways that we, I think, that we've learned from him, I mean, his time being here. One of the things from day number one that he was talking about is that to achieve that 0% levy that was done in 2021, that there were four positions that were cut. And public works director being one of those positions. And that, I think that there was, as a matter of fact, there was very good support because it was approved mid-year of this year of adding a community development director. So, I think one of our walkaways from our past city manager's time here was that, you know, we do really need to look at our staffing levels to make sure that we're building those redundancies, in addition, building up those succession planning, and also making sure that we are doing a better job of planning for the future within our, within the city. And so, and there's some other walkaways that I'll kind of intertwine as we're moving through the presentation. But I think that's one thing that I would really like to talk about, that, you know, it's really a look at that, that staffing levels. And we'll hear a lot about that when we bring up the department heads themselves in the conversations. Some driving factors for the 2023 budget. So our total personnel costs are going to increase 314,000 or 5.4% of the levy. Existing personnel is increasing 136,000 or 2.35. That's actually pretty good. The reason why I say that's actually pretty good, because you got a cost of living in there, you know, that's a 3% increase. And there's insurance increases. We're able to be underneath that 3% just because of some of the attrition that has happened, where we've, some of the higher salaries have been replaced with lower salary employees. And then, two decisions that were made mid-year, middle of this year, or earlier first quarter, of adding a new community development director, which would have approximately $50,000 or 0.87% levy increase. The total cost of that community development director, including all benefits, is approximately $168,000. The new police officer cost is 127. That's all from the general fund or the levy. That amounts to approximately a 2.2% levy increase. Debt levy, we're increasing it just a modest $7,000 or 0.1%. Local government aid, and we had a little bit of a discussion on this earlier this year. Right now, just like last year, we're poised to not get the supplemental local government aid, which would amount to about $119,000 loss, or a 2%, you know, loss in our... Would require us to do a 2% increase in our levy to compensate for that $119,000 loss. Brian and I met with Metro INET.
Are you saying we are having $119,000?
Loss. We're going to lose.
We are going to lose that for sure.
Right now, position. But again, last year, we were at this position, and it appeared that we were going to lose, and then we ended up getting the supplemental. But right now, by statute, and what's out there, that we're going to lose it. There's a workshop tomorrow that I'm going to tune into that's going to talk a little bit more about the local government aid, so I'll know more, if there's a chance at all that we could get that back. So then, in two weeks, we'll, I'll have a little bit more information if it really does look like it's going to happen. Brian and I had a meeting with Metro INET. Metro INET has gone through a number of changes this past year. They've hired a new head, kind of like a CEO of Metro INET. Metro INET has been kind of a, I look at it as kind of a quasi-Roseville department. They're moving out into their own entity. And by them moving into their own entity and having new leadership, they have a whole different look or perspective of how they're looking at delivering of their services. And there are some positions that the City of Roseville had been providing, like administrative support, that they would end up needing to hire. I think they were looking at, for 2023, five additional FTEs. And they've got, you know, graphs to show that they, their complement has been well down in consideration towards the industry itself. In addition, they need to build up some fund balance. And so, they're looking at, like, a... They came up with three different options to pay it all, basically, in one year, two years, three years. It'll be voted on by all the members of Metro INET, so we're not sure exactly where it'll fall out. This represents the worst-case scenario at option number one, which is in one year. And that would be a total of $72,000 increase, a little over 30% increase from where we're at in 2022. The levy portion to it, or the impact that it has on the general fund, is 54,000, or almost a percent of a levy increase to cover those additional costs. So the items above here that I've just kind of talked about, you know, it's almost $500,000, or an 8.5% levy increase, just to get, to cover those basic needs. I think, as we're all aware, we are in some very high inflationary times. From May to May, the increase right now is at 8.7% increase. So to achieve an 8.5% levy increase with what's included here, and we definitely will have some options that we can look at in our next presentation, you know, in two weeks. But at an 8.5% levy increase here, to achieve that is going to be just a struggle. And what do I mean by that? It means that all of our other line items have to be coming in at 0%. Yet, we are, we too are being faced with this inflationary, you know, item here. So, coming in at 8.5 will be a struggle right here, just with the information that I've presented, you know, of what we know today. So, that's the bad news. So let's get past that bad news part to it. I just, I put together, just so you're fully aware, and the residents know, this is what our debt levy summary is for '22 and '23, and the incremental changes. And part of that's just on the debt schedules themselves. As you can see, on the very bottom line, the 2022A, we had that covered and budgeted for inner 2022 levy already, so that's why that street project is not having a big impact, you know, on the residents. We've already absorbed that in there. And again, the credit goes to City Council, because we, again, we called debt early, and we refinanced to allow us to be able to do those projects. Preliminary valuation changes. Now, here's the good news. Here comes into the good news. This is the highest total market value increase in 10 years. The increase is across all property segments. That means industrial property, commercial property, apartments, residential. It's the second highest median residential market value increase in 10 years. Only 2020 was higher than this. So that's the good news. We're driving on good news now. So, here's just to show where the North St. Paul market value trends have been, and what they're looking at. So the median value home right now, again, these are estimates, they can change, they're not final valuation numbers, but you can see our overall, assessors' estimated market value went from, you know... Jeez, what is that? That's a big number. Is that $1,160 million? And it went up to $1,365 million. And the median value home went from 237 to 273. I think that's somewhere, as we see here, the median value home rose 15.5%. Our total estimated market value increased by 17.8%. Those are huge numbers. So, when we're looking at the market values, you know, it kind of leads to, when we see these huge growths like this, this is another indication that, at least in my estimation and in my opinion, that it's a time that levying is okay to do. In addition, that fiscal disparities component that I talked about earlier, those two factors combining, it really is showing that we should be levying. If we don't, we will hurt ourselves with a double whammy coming in future years. And we will see the impact coming in 2024. And I think we can probably all agree, market values will not stay where these market values are. I think the economic indicators are showing that we're potentially heading in for a recession, and we could end up having problems. 2024 and 2025 are probably going to be our more problematic budget years. So I don't want us to look at it from the standpoint of cutting ourselves short today because our challenges are going to become, just magnified that much more in '24 and '25. So as you can see, the preliminary market values, you know, we're seeing... Last year, the residential, you know, change in the number of parcels was up, you know, 1.2%. They're pretty much stagnant in apartments and commercial and industrial, going into, from '21 to '22. But look at those market values. Residential, 15.5. Apartments, 14.5. Commercial, 3.2. Industrial, 10.4. I think we have, I think it was something like $50 million of the market value increase is due to growth, new growth, new construction. Again, those are things that this City Council should be taking credit for because those were the decisions to redevelopment, that is causing our tax base to move up in the future. And so, again, we've positioned ourselves very, very well for the future. The potential property tax impacts. I've kind of run some scenarios based upon this. Now, the actual calculation for net tax capacities and so forth from Ramsey County won't be done until August. So, based upon the little knowledge that I have of how property taxes work, remember, once upon a time, I actually did the property tax calculations many years ago. So I have kind of an educated look at how we would go about doing this. And so, I put in some assumptions for where net tax capacity would be, and then thus, what our fiscal disparities would come out to be for 2023. And then, I also have, kind of to show, illustrate what that, what I've been talking about, is if we don't levy, what's that impact going to be on fiscal disparities with no levy increase in 2024? And so, I ran it, looking at, you know, giving, basically given options of looking at a property tax levy increase from 0% all the way up to 10%. And showing what that is as far as a tax levy increase total, what impact that has on the median value home, as far as their total tax for the general fund component to it, and then, what's the change from '22 to '23? And if you look at that, even up to a 1% levy increase, there still would be a reduction in the property taxes that a resident with a median value home pays from '22 to '23. That's absolutely remarkable. You know why that's remarkable? Because it went up 15.5% in market value. I mean, it went from 237 to 274. Again, that's a huge indication that what we did in doing with our debt and fiscal disparities, that we positioned ourselves to do a levy this year. And as you keep going through and you're looking at those, you can see with the impact. And I really wanted to break it down, you know, even at a 10% levy increase, you know, it's a $101 increase, you know, on a median value home. That's $8.42, you know, a month. I'm not trying to downplay that, and I'm not trying to say that that's not an impact and that I'm insensitive to the residents. I understand. And we're living in some very tough times, as costs of everything are rising. Again, we're seeing inflation rates of 8.7%. I'm just trying to illustrate and show that that impact isn't as big of an impact as one would think. And part of that is because we've offset a lot of that through what we've done in the past year. But, I kind of want to show the illustration of that. Let's say we did a 0% tax levy, and we gave every resident on the median value home a $22 reduction from what they're paying today. And then, we go in the next year, and we do another 0% levy increase. They're going to be paying $48 more in 2024, even with a zero and a zero, because our local rate will be dropping down, and our fiscal disparity dollars will be dropping down that we get. And we will still have an impact on our residents. So somehow, we need to find that sweet spot to where we feel comfortable, so we're minimizing the impact in 2024 with what our decision is in 2023. And again, I honestly believe that we're going to see, and I'm going to probably say 2025 is probably going to be the roughest year. I think by that point in time, residential properties will be dropping. I think we'll still be strong enough coming up here, because remember, when we get ready for the payable 2024 valuations, they're done on January 2nd of 2023. I think that, I think the residential values will still be good. I think they'll start to drop drastically after that. And at that point in time, if our values are going down, isn't really the greatest time in the world to start raising that levy up at the same time. And we'll be having that as an impact, and we'll also be having the loss of fiscal disparity dollars as an impact, too. dollars as an impact too. HRA and EDA property tax levy. Historically, we've, basically, we've levied based upon what the statute maximum will allow us for the HRA. That's a 0.0185% of the estimated market value by statute. If we were to do that, that would be a $215,000 levy. It's a 5.1% increase. It would have a $2 increase on the median value home. And for the EDA, if we were to do the maximum of 0.1813% of the estimated market value, again, that would be a 5.1% increase and that would have an increase of $2 per median The budget calendar that we're looking at tonight is basically our official kickoff. There's already been a lot of work that's been done behind the scenes. Obviously, we've done the salary projections. All department heads have been given materials, have submitted. We've already had some initial conversations after tonight and after we have some questions answered and get a little bit more clear direction, Brian and I will be meeting with department heads to go through and kind of firm that up so we can present something for you on the 19th. And we'll be having continuous meetings all the way through the time that we adopt the preliminary levy in September. And remember, in September, you know, we're going to be adopting a maximum levy, which means it can't go up from that point, but it can absolutely go down. So from now until then, we'll really be focusing a lot on the levy component to it. We'll also be looking at the CIP, the tenure CIP plan. And then after we ask, answer some questions tonight, will help us determine what other discussions that we want to have to help you be able to make a decision and to help us develop a budget that meets your goals and your needs. And so with that, see, that's where that other item would have been very handy because I've already through this part. It's really opening up to discussion as far as the material that was presented. So it's really kind of a question and answer period.
I think it was a good, good presentation. Looking forward to what anticipation, what's going to happen. Inflation's a big deal.
It's huge.
It's a big deal right now. And I think market values, I think you're correct. I think we're at the high peak and, you know, they just keep going up and up and up. They can't sustainable at those levels. So I think you're kind of correct. In the next couple of years, there will be a correction in the market and that's when we're going to be hit. But I'll open it up to council. That's Mayor Thorson.
Just looking at this schedule, I'm not noticing because there's another component to our budget and that's the enterprise funds. And in years past, we've kind of, you know, talked about the general fund separately, but, you know, they can be a part of each other. And, you know, we're in a unique position where we have our own electric utilities. And so, you know, monies from that have been used to finance projects in the past and to supplement general fund operations. So I'm just kind of curious, what, are we planning on having discussions on that in the future here or is that, what's the outlook for that?
That is, that is a question that'll, that'll be asked later on. So we certainly can have some preliminary discussions on the enterprise funds. We're working on those as we're working on the general fund too. So yeah, we certainly can do that too. And you're absolutely right. One of the options that, you know, will be presented in two weeks is, you know, again, depending on the comfort level of setting that levy target, you know, an option is, you know, you transfer more from your enterprise funds to offset some of those increases. And that'll be something that we'll, from the staff level, will be presenting. So yes, we definitely should be taking a look at those. And they're a little bit more subject to change because there's some other components that we don't end up getting. I'll use the electric fund. Usually it's not until the latter part of the year that we actually find out from MMPA. Is that Brian, is that correct? What they're positioning for a rate increase for the next year, which has, obviously has a great impact on our rate for that. But we definitely can have preliminary numbers ready for you to take a look at.
Because I've been trying to encourage us to adopt like a fund balance policy within those funds because I think that can help guide us in our decision making for the general fund as well. And also, I can't remember the dollar figure off the top of my head, but didn't 2020, was it 2021, we ended up in a positive? So we, you know, we try to balance, we pass a balanced budget, but we ended up with a positive, you know, we didn't spend as much money as we were anticipating. And then that money per our policy gets put into other funds. What was that? Do you happen to know what that number was off the top of our head?
Yeah, that the number for the general fund was $824,000. And when we look at that from a budgetary standpoint, this is where it kind of, it kind of gets a little bit tricky and really comes down to a dialogue on where our comfort level is. From an expenditure standpoint, we're a little over $200,000 to the positive on our expenditure. We already know there's $100,000 that we've already taken out for this year in 2022 and that was in the parks, the contracted lawn service, and we're doing that in-house. So we already reduced that. So if we were to just play out that the expenditures were in line with what they were in 2021, you know, there was $100,000. So the bulk of that 824 really is coming from revenues, increased revenue sources. And the biggest one is permitting. And permitting went a lot higher than we had anticipated. Earlier this year, permitting was close to what we would normally see in a predictable year. And then all of a sudden, we ended up having the storm that came through. And we're seeing permitting in the last month since the storm go up significantly. That's kind of that unpredictability to it. Not to say that, and it's definitely something that we'll be having the discussion with, might be that if we all feel comfortable, we could increase the revenues. And part of it, there's an expenditure that increases too because we do not do all of the inspections ourselves. We hire somebody. So there's a ratio that we could actually net out of that. But that's definitely something that we can look at and it'll be an option that we will present. And again, the city council will have the opportunity to adopt that. But to answer your question, that could be a way to reduce some of that levy impact, yes.
Yeah, that was another point I had about the May 19th hailstorm and kind of what I think the most common repair is the roof. And so are we seeing kind of just on average, what's the building permit revenue that the city actually sees because we do contract that out? And then, you know, people have two years to make an insurance claim. So that's potentially something we could see spread out over the course of the next two years, having this increase in building permits. We also had some unspent, I can't even remember now what the acronyms are, but we had some money from the CARES Act and then something else. Where are we at with that? And then what are the parameters on what we can spend that money on?
I'll have to, I'll push down the road, the answer for the original CARE funding to find out where we're at is that last year, we had allocated some of that for some one-time purchases in the police department. So I'll have to look to see where we're at, if we're done, what's left out of that one at that point in time. I think we were looking at, I think we had about $160,000 left. We had allocated most of that out to some one-time purchases. As far as this next round, the ARPA funds, we have just received our second half. So we have approximately $1,360,000. But we had earmarked that for the 2020 street projects.
Okay.
So how much, 1 million?
360,000, 365 or something, 66 or something like that.
And so we're getting some news about potentially reduction in LGA. What is our full LGA allotment? Do you happen to know that number? Isn't it like 1.8 million or somewhere around there?
So in 2022, our full allotment was 1,655,000. Little under 1.3 million was allocated to the general fund. Approximately 266,000 was allocated to street maintenance fund and 100,000 to the park fund.
So there's another area where, you know, if we wanted to, we can make modifications to help. But I'm just, you know, obviously where there's going to be all, there's a million ways to slice the pie. I'm just trying to off recollection, you know, some of these things that we've, we've chosen to do, but it sounds like obviously we'll have more, more discussion.
I'm chuckling a little bit because I wrote down these numbers towards the end of the day anticipating some of the questions that make out, yeah. And yes, that's already, Brian and I had talked about, that that is an option that we will be presenting for. So I'm just kind of laughing because I love.
Well, we're on the same wavelength then. Sounds like, okay, great. And then, you know, that I think, you know, we, it was presented to us earlier this year about the creation of the community development director position. And we all agreed that obviously there's some staffing issues and need to be addressed. And now absent a city manager, I, me personally, I think that's a decision that the new individual would need to make if perhaps they want to go a different direction. So I think for now, I would be apt to say, let's put that on hold until that new person is on board in, you know, September, October, hopefully at the earliest, and then maybe they can make a determination on that. Because I don't think, we're not proceeding forward with interviewing and hiring someone for that, are we?
No, no, we're, no, we're not. It is on hold. However, from a budgetary standpoint, we do need to include it into our budget. So that brings me to my point number two of my walkaways from our past city manager. And again, it does tie into the staffing level. And it's, you know, as we're looking for a new city manager, we certainly don't want to put ourselves in the position where we've, you know, tied their hands and we haven't levied enough or we haven't put the correct staffing levels in there because then it creates a mid-year shift. And it may just totally discourage somebody from even applying if they're looking at the complement or seeing that there's difficulty getting a levy increase. So those are some factors that we absolutely need to be aware of. So, you know, as far as the community development position, I mean, a new city manager may come in and say, hey, you know, I'd really like to change the title of that and having a, you know, an assistant city manager and they would do community development, some development and some other functions. But the bottom line is, is that we would have at least a significant amount of the dollars already in the budget and would be a smaller increment that would come up.
And then I guess the last comment I had was that for the HRA and EDA budgets, are we going to see any kind of like anticipated cost or like how they're going, like an individual budget within those? And maybe like a recap of how monies have been spent in the past? And kind of going along that whole idea of, you know, just because we can levy, should we? And, you know, so I'd like to see things like the current fund balance of each and then, you know, if we're going to levy, why are we levying? Why do we need those dollars and what are we going to spend them on? Sorts of things that I would need to see before I would want to support something like that. So that's all I have.
I would say for the HRA, EDA budgets, it'd be nice to go back to the committees and get a recommendation from them.
Absolutely.
Just to see what, you know, what their plans are for spending for the year, you know, we did talk about some sort of position in the EDA. And again, it goes back to, I think, that new city manager, you know, what is that title going to be? Maybe it's part of EDA, maybe it's part, you know, it could be a whole lot of things. So I think, you know, getting some sort of recommendation from the HRA and the EDA, or at least have discussion in those commissions to bring back either a recommendation or a, you know, some sort of thought process for why we would raise that levy to what they want it to be.
And to play off of that, and that was a part of what I had sent out when our past city manager was still here and sent him, he got a little bit more detailed budget schedule. That went out to all the department heads and so forth. But there was a second page of the document and it listed all of our commissions because we really should be talking to every one of our, our commissions and getting their recommendations and bringing that forth to the city council. So that's including planning arts and, you know, parks and rec and so forth to make sure that they all have a voice in this budget process.
You did say one of the positive things here was you have a year's experience now within our budget?
Pretty close. I have to be on.
Know numbers now rather than just jumping into the middle of the budget and.
I still have to be on good behavior for another week before I hit my probationary period over, but.
And I would say part of that is, you know, you're, the position that you're asking for in the past, you know, is that also part of, part of this budget?
That's, you know, it really comes out of some of the discussions that we're, we're going to have a little bit later. You know, to me, I look at things from the standpoint of what's the best for the city. And I look at it as steps and increments in getting there. And so I believe that there's some other needs that are, to me, that I would prioritize higher. I'm not going to say what they are until we get into that part. So I certainly could defer that, you know, request a little bit longer. It really comes down to some other needs and where we're going to, you know, really kind of target our levy at. And that's really, I think, more critical for me to see. Again, almost a year into this, this job here, I am still thankful to have this opportunity. I'm still amazed at the city council. I'm still amazed at all the people that work here and dedication. And I still, I know it's hard to believe, after a year, I'm still glad that I made this decision. So yeah, so I just think it's just a great environment. I just think that there's some other priorities that we, that we really haven't been discussing as far as staffing is concerned in some other areas, so.
I know you feel pretty comfortable in your office now because your, when you started, your desk was, only had a few papers on it. Now it's piled up two feet high.
Yeah.
Any other comments or concerns for presentation? Otherwise, part two of the.
Part two? Ready to move on?
Ready to move on.
All right. So part two. These were the budget objectives and outcomes that were in the 2022 budget. It's to focus on basic services and funding these activities at adequate levels, demonstrate a commitment to existing infrastructure and proactive repair slash replacement, sufficient funding for equipment replacement, building maintenance and information technology, ensure city operated public safety programs meet the needs of our residents, balance residential market growth with tax increases. That's a key one I'm going to play off of because that's kind of my overall message that I've been saying over and over again. And then adhere to a balanced budget. And I think that's, you know, that's a good principle that we totally believe in. I want to back up to the third to last bullet in public safety. Again, a lot of compliment, I have to give a lot of compliment to the city council because last year and this, well, in the year that I've been here, you've made a significant investment in public safety. And that is something that just shouldn't be overshadowed. And it's, and it's not just the increases in staff, it's also the increase in the commitment to funding of needed equipment. It's also the increase in the commitment to funding of needed equipment. Um, in both the police and the fire. So, um, more, a little, a little bit more heavy on the police side. And, and I think that we need to make some attention this year on the fire side. But, um, but yeah, I, I think that you, you've done just a remarkable job on public safety. So I'm bringing these pub, um, budget objectives and outcomes that were in 2022. Here's my question. Do you agree with the budget objectives and outcomes? And I would also like to ask you to take a moment and write down any additional budget objectives or outcomes that you would like to see. And then we will have more of a discussion on that.
Could you go back to the previous slide, please? Thank you.
I'll leave it there.
Appreciate it.
Remember, your responses need to be in the form of a question.
What was the difference between the two?
Uh, some like lines that you can follow on.
Can you read any of it?
I think there's some, yeah, I think we can see.
Most of mine fell underneath, I mean, mine were more, mine were much more specific than the general budget over. And I got those down as we were, as we were sitting here. So the majority of mine fall into the big buckets you already have.
So we're looking at downtown landscaping and road projects, uh, preparing, um, to make sure that we have the, the right positions, um, community development director, um, the building maintenance, um, of all of our facilities. So a lot, really a lot of investing and a lot of planning items is, is what you're identifying.
A lot of mine is now, let's invest now.
Yeah. In the future.
We're, we're playing catch up on a lot of things. Let's continue to build on that, take the.
So I didn't specifically put items in there that, uh.
And, and you, and you, and you don't have to have specific items that are in there. You know, to me, to me, my walkaway is, is really investment. Um, because then there's going to be a dialogue that's around that investment, especially when we come to the capital improvement project. Then we'll get into the specific details.
Can I tell you mine then, or you want?
Yes, if I can.
You want to take it or you want me to explain it to you?
You explain it.
Well, I, I agree with the objective. Uh, I agree with the objectives and outcomes that you had listed. Uh, I believe these are instrumental for our core services. Uh, also giving our taxpayers the greatest amount of outcome for our assets and services. Uh, in other words, greatest value for our services. Uh, we need to keep updated, need to keep things updated.
Okay.
Something of that sort.
I'm going to take it because I'm going to take this after we're done and, and make sure that it's all compiled and that it'll be the first thing in our next workshop to make sure that we're in agreement with what's there.
Can I put Tim's name on here?
I said, I answered your question with a question and I said, well, what, what current city services are not at adequate levels right now? And I think that, you know, once we get feedback from the department heads, um, you know, we can talk about that. Just to stress the continued import, importance on focusing on the capital improvement plan and our aging infrastructure, because it's just as the years go on, we're seeing more and more water main breaks and more and more, um, sewer backups, things like that, that are just going to keep getting worse and worse the longer that gets delayed. So if we fall off the schedule, kind of like we did this year, it's just going to be a compounding problem in years down the road. And then I just, you know, last thought was, you know, try our best to make an attempt to keep fees and taxes as low as possible due to the current economic uncertainty and, and current market inflation levels, you know? It, I understand what you're saying by, you know, trying to plan ahead in years into the future, but it's, it's hard to do because of all those uncertainties. So what we can do is just focus on the now. And, uh, it's just going to be a tough pill for people to swallow when, you know, their, their taxes are already going to go up with this large adjustment in their market value on top of it. And then if we tack on adding increasing fees and, and taxes, it's just kind of a double whammy, especially when prices of everything are up. So that's just quickly my thoughts.
I'm going to come and grab those, um, Candy?
Well, the water tower, uh, you know, I think we're going to need a water tower at some point. So just kind of put that in your back of your mind. The community center, how are we going to repair it? When are we going to repair it and where the funding is going to come from that? And then just keeping a good balance for equipment and replacements, you know, because that, those things, things come up. And it's important to be ready for that. And, um, not to rely on the LGA, I mean, we do rely on it a lot. But maybe in the future, we might have to not really rely on it, so. If it's going to, you know, decrease every year, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Last but not least.
Okay. Well, thank you for your presentation, first of all. Um, so I completely agree with my, um, colleagues here about infrastructure, CIP, um, and maintenance, maintenance of existing, um, um, assets that we have. Additionally, I think, um, providing adequate funding to enhance the livability, um, through multimodal transportation, parks and rec, arts and culture. And then invest equitably so each department's needs are met. And that's distributed, um, in a way that is reflective of the needs, but also balanced in the budget. Um, I think you're already on roll with this, but an inclusive process. And, um, staffing.
I thank you very much. I'm going to come and grab that here in a second, but I'm going to go back over here and get you started on the second one. And definitely, definitely some of this can be overlap. But the next one is city goals. Please take a moment and write down city goals so we can better align the 2023 budget. And that's, that's where, what I kind of stated earlier. Um, you know, at some point in time, we really do need to develop a citywide mission, vision in those goals and that we are, and, and we don't want a ton of goals, you know? Four goals, we want to be able to make sure that all of the department heads are in alignment with those goals and that we're actually budgeting and putting our money, um, into achieving those goals. In other words, they have to have measurable results. Um, and I, I hear so much of, of what would fall into that very easily. Um, when you're talking about the capital improvement planning, um, the infrastructural needs of the, of the city. Um, you can definitely see that that would fall into one of those high, high goals that, that the city has. And, and, you know, and, and with that, it, it intertwines with, uh, you know, my multimodal transportation and making this a more livable community. So I mean, there's, there's things that have already been coming up that intertwine with, with the goals. But, you know, if we can get a couple of, of high-level goals of your thoughts that we can, Brian and I can convey to the department heads that that's kind of our direction to make sure that when we come back with options, that we're also talking about the impact of those options, whether they're funded or they're not, and in making sure that they're in alignment with your goals.
And if it helps, Dan, at the end, if we have time, uh, we did a workshop early in the year for the council. And we wrote down a lot of what we're talking about. And I don't know if that was ever, ever given to you or staff or anything. So I think there's a document out there, but I did write them all down.
Oh, fantastic.
So I do have.
Good.
I could do.
Do you have it? Okay.
You do have it? Okay.
Perfect, perfect.
And I think that kind of overlaps with some of the stuff that.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Did we ever do anything with that?
And you know what they always say, whoever makes eye contact gets picked on first? Yeah. Go. Yes, please.
Well, affordability, you know, we want to keep the town, you know, people want to move in here. So we want to keep our taxes low, but we want to deliver services. Public safety is number one, I know we talked about that before. Good roads and maintaining the roads and staffing.
Thank you ver, thank you very much. Mayor?
Councilmember Peterson, all good. Uh, I would agree with that. Also, uh, I believe, you know, staffing levels, we need to get to where we were, uh, to optimize the organism, to benefit the whole organization. I think the last couple of years coming out of the pandemic now, I think we're, uh, short-staffed and we need, uh, a staffing level. Uh, capital, capital improvement plan with the streets. I think we're, uh, we need to get those, uh, keep those going. Uh, development and redevelopment with the Lilly Building, uh, community center. Also Highway 36 and 120 is. That's what I have.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And Councilmember Thorson?
So this is pretty general and vague, and I've said this before, but I think just to have a renewed focus on providing basic functions of local government. So public safety, public works, general city services and, and looking at the needs versus the wants. Because every department's going to have, you know, a long list of things that they want to have. But, you know, we got to look at the big. they want to have. But, you know, we got to look at the big picture. And, you know, sometimes we, we just can't fund everything. Just the continued focus on the capital improvement plan, just sounding like a broken record, but it's just, it's important. And more specific things, just a goal to, at least by the end of 2023, have the downtown landscaping completed. And then have the new city manager review staffing levels. Because that, that was discussed at our council retreat. It's been brought up here, obviously, several times. So that clearly is an area of focus.
So your comment of broken record, I actually like hearing that because it, it's giving us a constant theme that really where we should be prioritizing, you know, our resources. So no, actually, thank you very much. I'm going to grab that in a second. Lisa?
Yeah, mine are quite vague as well, but I would agree with many of the things that have been said so far. I would like to see, and this is bigger picture than maybe that this was intended for, but invest in the city, particularly infrastructure to mitigate impacts of climate change.
Wow.
And then invest in the capacity of city staff. So the services can also reflect the changing needs of the community. And then I would refer to the comp plan as well. There is a vision statement in there as well. Should I read it? Let me read it.
Sure. Yes, please.
North St. Paul is your favorite small town. We promote community stewardship through an involved and informed citizenry. We preserve neighborhood value with diverse and maintain housing and active neighbors. The city engages in creative place making that fosters an environment of economic and employment opportunity. North St. Paul builds systems that connect people to places and promote active lifestyles.
Very good. It's very good.
Work's been done.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Cole?
Beauty of going last. What they said. Again, to Dan, to tie into your earlier comment, a lot of its consistency, I think, across most all of us here, it's all just said potentially a different way. But it's making, it's continue to make or make North St. Paul a desirable destination for new residents and new businesses. Very similar to what, what Lisa just, just read, and a lot of that ties in. To provide the city amenities and services the residents are seeking. To continue the downtown development with businesses and services the residents want. Continue to make North St. Paul livable, walkable community. Enhance the parks. Enhance additional ways of usage and potentially incremental parks throughout, as well as just, you know, increased rate of repair for city infrastructure, the CIP.
Fantastic. Oh, two down. Two to go.
Oh, look at the time.
Next one is quicker and easier to do. The last one will take a little bit more Please take a moment and write down the range you would like to set for the 2023 levy target.
There's so many unknowns right now.
Absolutely. There's, there's a lot of unknowns. Part of the presentation was kind of what we know today. And, but this can change. It's something for us to, at least the budget that we give to you in two weeks, it may not meet that, but then it'll give you options to get within that range. And then that's really where the dialogue really begins. Because you'll hear from department heads, you'll be able to ask those tough questions. It'll be able to weed out, is it, is it a want? Is it a need? You know, if we do this, how do we balance this? Are we giving out on some of our goals that you've just very articulately, you know, put together? So it's really just to get us that where are we on the, the correct page? Frankly, if there's a lot of zeros that are on here, there's not a lot that we're going to be able to have. It's going to be a very tough, tough budget discussion in year. And again, I can emphasize, we're going against what we've already set up and against one of our budget outcomes and objectives. So with my final piece to it, I'm starting off with. Councilmember Thorson?
Zero to 5.32%.
Keep going down the road.
Oh, I'm going to, 4 to 7.165. I'd go with Councilmember Thorson's, give it a little 0.165.
6 to 10%.
A goal?
Range.
Goal, goal, goal is to stay in line with historic average, but let's see what that looks like when we're done. So I said not to exceed 6%, but that doesn't get us there. Lot of unknown.
You got a couple of minutes.
Couple, couple of minutes left for this next one here, and they didn't think I could fill up an hour and a half.
Oh, I knew you could. I'm excited about these things.
So please take a moment and write down what budget topics or additional information would help in making your final budget decision. Some of those, I think, yes, you, Councilmember Thorson had brought up earlier, you know, things like the enterprise fund and so forth. Those are the, the type of topics. Yep.
Start in the middle. Work your way to left and right.
No, you're going first.
I mean, first thing I did is, the first thing I wrote down was big picture and follow my way down. It's kind of the way my, my thought process goes. But enterprise funds, CIP, park dedication funds, and how to utilize the funds. What can we use it for? I, you know, we're, we're building funds. I think it's time that we start to, to reinvest. Review city-owned properties and discuss usage. Transfer the ownership of said properties to the EDA to expedite development.
Thank you. We're going to, we're going to go this, this way this time.
Okay.
You're not going to go around.
So I said an overview of when the department heads make their presentation, the functions and activities of the each department, and then also kind of an assessment of where they are at in terms of their budget and their programming. And then also, it'd be helpful for any budget allocations to have some data and trends or some charts to have some level of justification, at least quantitatively. I'd like to see some qualitative as well, if possible. And then to ask the question of how it's consistent with the comp plan. And then also like to know a little bit about staffing in each department and projections even. And then to Councilmember Cole's point, a little bit more about, you know, our existing funds and potentially some of the limitations and privileges of each one. Thank you.
Well, I should have never asked this question. It'd like a lot of work.
My recommendation is for the EDA, HRA, to kind of bring it to their commissions to get levies, you know, what, what they would like to see it at. I think we'll get a lot of information from the department heads when they have their meetings with you in regards to the needs, needs for the city and the wants. And I think that pretty much sets the, the general levy is what we hear, when we do hear from them. What's really interesting is I want to know what, how we come out of this pandemic, you know, as we come out of it, what have we learned? What, what, now we have Open Gov. We've got other things in place that we're working with now that we didn't have before. And, you know, and I think according to our, you know, working with the budget, Roseville IT, you know, what, what are they giving us for that amount of money? That, that's a big dollar amount that we're using with Roseville. I'd like to find out, you know, what, what value do we get out of that? And how business is done differently than, than it was before? And how do we, you know, how do we, how do we learn from it and grow from it? And determine, there's things that I think that, coming out of the pandemic, that we've learned that we might do things a lot differently, and it might be better for us.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, the inter- enterprise funds too, I'm kind of interested on that one. Budget percentages, scenarios, you know, different things that you can say, Dan, that we do this, it impacts that.
Options.
And then this is kind of a want. But is there any extra money for SWAG? I mean, we talked about this before, and it's been voted down on it. We have PINS, and we have, that's all we have is PINS. But like, we have, like, guest speakers or something. We can give maybe a water bottle, or just some little thing. I mean, I'm not talking big money, if there's any extra money somewhere. Because these other cities that I deal with, they, they really have a lot of stuff. And I mean, it's just, it's just probably a want, but...
But you're, you're hitting on the, the point of promoting the city.
Promoting our city, yeah. I like the sign that they put up. I just noticed that on the fire department. That was cool. Took a picture of that. That's all I have.
Councilmember Thorson?
Yeah, I would say kind of touch on some of the stuff earlier, but maybe seeing more historical data on each department, kind of light item stuff. If there's trends, you know, for example, if we're budgeting $10,000 in office supplies out of finance every year, and they're only spending $800 to $900, we can probably bring that down. But just not saying that's what's going on, but just an obvious example. Enterprise fund detail, fund balances. It'd be nice to see some 2022 year-to-date actual revenues and expenses versus what we were projecting, and, and how, you know, close we are. Department budget details and, and details on the capital improvement plan.
I think that wraps it up. I thank you very much. I thank each and every one of you very much for, for your patience in, in going through this. I think we've, at least for me, I've gathered a lot of information, a lot of good direction that I can share with our department heads. And, and the first step will be Brian and I will try to digest all of this, and then meet with the department heads. But I thank you very much. I didn't think I'd be able to fill up the hour and a half.
It was awesome.
But I thank you very, very much.
And I would say, and I would say, get that list from our.
Yes.
Workshop or retreat that we had. There are a lot of things on there. One of the things was, you know, backdrop for, for here, there's, there's SWAG, or if that's part of that or not.
It is. It's about promoting the, the city. And, and those are really low-cost items to be able to, to do that. So it's all about branding.
Good. Good. Well, thank you, Dan. I really appreciate it. It was a good workshop. Turn it over back to interim city manager, Randall.
Hey, Mayor, that concludes our agenda items for the workshop.
Anything else? Anybody add anything? If not, motion to adjourn. Move by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cole. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Close, meaning adjourn. We'll take a couple of minutes and.